Welcome, everyone, to the February 14th Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors Meeting. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for coming tonight. I would just like to announce, first off, that Supervisor Cummings will be zooming in tonight, and then our township engineer, John Everett, is on a vacation, and his colleague from CKS, Ms. Michelle Fountain, will be here tonight covering for John. Very nice to meet you. Mrs. Fountain, thank you. Before the start of this meeting, the Board of Supervisors held an executive session at 6:00 to discuss personnel and the Federation Housing Proposed Project. Also, the Board of Supervisors held an executive session on February 5th at 6:30 to about 7:45, where we met with our professionals to discuss our legal options with the Federation Housing Project. The Board of Supervisors also held a workshop tonight, which we discussed, the Fourth of July Parade. We spoke about the quality of our audio and video for these meetings. Mr. Italia had given us an update with the master plumbers who had came at our last meeting. We also spoke about Dr. Gary Bowman, who has been given a emeritus position on the library board, which he sat on for many, many years. We also spoke about our First Responder Day for September 22nd, possibly looking into a DJ and a speaker system for that event. We spoke about speed bumps, speed humps. Mr. Mulholland had given us an update with the Dolphin Park in regards to tennis and pickleball courts, and Mr. Italia had spoke about some future ordinances that hopefully we will be putting to rest. At this time, I would like to open the floor for public comment. You can please come to the microphone, state your name, your address, write it in our logbook, and we will be holding everybody to a three-minute time limit tonight. Thank you very much.
I signed in. My name is Lanny Roscoe. I live in Pine Tree Farms. I'm a woman of limited means. Since the summer of 2021, I have tried to get stone more owners then of Sunset Memorial Park to be good neighbors and care for the trees and their property that border Pine Tree Farms. I alerted the general manager of Sunset Memorial Park of a dead tree that needed to be taken down, but was told that they had no money to remove it. Then in December, lo and behold, the dead elm tree came down, and along with it went my fence, a shed roof, damage to my neighbor's shed, siding on my house, and a tree also took out the electric lines and my -- did I say fence? Yes, my fence. And I tried since that time to contact and be a good neighbor and get my deposit, my deductible back, which is $1,000. Yes, sir?
We do have an answer for you that we took. I just wanted you to know. Mike, could you just?
Yes, citations were filed within District Court last week. There's also a hearing. The Conservation District is moving forward, I believe, with penalizing them as well.
What does that mean, penalizing them?
Fines.
Like, how much?
That's not my job. I don't know that. That's a county thing.
Can't be enough.
We're at $1,000 per citation, and there is eight citations in court.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for all of that. Maybe some of the flooding that happens in our neighborhood will now be taken care of. But I did call you, Mike, to let you know that there is now a new owner, and I can't do anything personally for the damage that was done to my property because I now have to file in Florida. So I can't because that's the people that own the property now.
You actually don't. They are still -- their headquarters is still registered in Pennsylvania. I went and researched it.
Okay, well, then, we should have a talk.
We should.
Because I was told by a lawyer I can't.
Their headquarters is still, same place, Ben Salem.
But that's not the owner, Everett's story.
They basically renamed themselves, but their corporate headquarters is listed as Ben Salem.
All right.
We'll talk.
We'll be, we'll talk. Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't get my three minutes, but anyway, God bless everybody. I hope everything goes well. Thank you very much. And I think we all ought to just take a moment of silence for what happened in Kansas City today, and that is just such a heartbreaking situation. So.
Thank you, Mrs. Roscoe. Anybody else for public comment tonight?
Evening, gentlemen. Thanks for giving me the time. My name is John Herman. I live in 1912 McGee Street, near Bromley's. I've been there for about 18 years at that residence, and I'm old school from the neighborhood. My family moved back here back in '76. I'll make it, try to make this short. There's always noise in that area of Bromley's, et cetera, Silcox, Pavers, things that we kind of know goes on in the neighborhood in terms of noise and such. Recently, there's been some issues, though, directly across the street from my house with two large heating oil trucks. I understand years ago, there was an agreement with Silcox and some of the other neighbors that they would put some plants and trees along McGee Street to kind of block their yard with all their equipment and such. Those trees have since died. Many of the, much of the fencing has fallen apart, and now they have these two giant heating oil trucks, diesel engines, straight across from my driveway. Used to be just a storage area, but they moved the plows out, and they're allowing these guys, it's a separate business, to utilize that space and operate directly into the street. I did a little research, and I read through the ordinances. I wasn't aware of this, but apparently there is such a thing as a buffer yard between two zones. My zone's residential, and this gentleman probably knows best, maybe, and the other side is light industrial. So not only is there no buffer yard, which is, according to ordinance, should be 25 feet, but in addition to that, they're operating from this location, allowing another business to operate from this location right into the street. We have signs on the street for death and assisted kids, and we also have on one side of the street, like, no through traffic. It seems to be really contradictory to defeat the purpose of the ordinance, to allow these heavy-duty trucks to be operating. I can't tell you how many, I measured it out, it's about 60, 70 feet from my bedroom window. These trucks vibrate and rumble. If I put a glass of water on my windowsill, you'd see the ripples of the water going through my home. So I can't tell you how many times I've woken up. I'm sleep deprived, and I've been as tolerant as I can with the guys. I've been civil with everybody. I'm afraid of, you know, in this day and age, it's not like old-school days where you could approach someone and ask a favor and say, hey, buddy, can you, you know, like, with Silcox or somebody else. You never know how someone's going to react. So I thought it'd be best to present it to the board. Had a lot of problems in that street. We have Quality Auto down there doing the same thing. It's an auto body shop. They got the road paved into the, into the street, like a space paved where it was once a residential property. So I wish someone could go out there and take a look at some of this stuff. You know, I may be right, I may be wrong, but it is a major nuisance. I wouldn't be here today. I'm pro-business, and I just got to get to sleep.
Mr. Herman, we, I feel for you. I'm sure the rest of the board does. Mr. Italia, is there anything we can do? Could you possibly take a look at it?
Yeah, we'll look into it to see if they have a U and O to have those trucks there. It's unfortunate. You have two districts colliding. The buffer yards only for, if it was approved as that, I can tell you that building is, was there probably before the ordinance. So if the buffer yard was never there, it really doesn't need to be, there's nothing to maintain, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So we'd have to look at that, but the idling of the trucks, I could, we could look at that and see if that business is allowed to be there or not.
That may be covered in the new noise ordinance, too.
Yeah, the idling. Yeah, I believe that's in there.
Yeah. I'm sure you guys are aware of Wilson's Pub, too. That's a nightmare for that neighborhood, that nuisance bar, Wilson's. Gee, Ted. Calling you out, Ted, calling you out. Yeah, but anyway, I'm just trying to out there while I have your ear, that's all. But if you could look into those trucks, I'd like to get some sleep, and I don't know what else to do about it. You know, I don't want to be calling the police and bothering the police about it. But I thought maybe we could kind of, do it on the down low and say, yo, guys, can we maybe, like?
Mr. Herman, I know your number. I will be in touch with you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
I'm Glenn Stevens, 345 East Myrtle. We, the people, have a right to be securing our property. We, the people, have a right to be secure in our possessions. We, the people, have a right to equal and unbiased representation through our elected officials. We, the people, have a right to unbiased protection by our law enforcement. We, the people, have the right to remain silent. Isn't that right, Mike? Do you have the right to remain silent, Mike?
Mr. Stevens, you're supposed to address, you're supposed to address the board.
Address the board.
Well, I'd like to show you all something. This is Mike Italia's page, where he claims to have spotless integrity. Can you believe that? A man with spotless integrity won't answer a couple questions about, one, his duties, and, two, his actions. Are you okay to, Mr. Schrill, you're fine with him remaining silent?
Sir, you're--
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's my turn to talk. Just a yes or no would be fine. Spotless integrity. Can you believe that? I had some other stuff I wanted to do, but I wanted to take a little trip down memory lane. When Mike approved the destruction and theft of my property, the day after, two days after, he called, he finally called me back, and he told me that he was there and inspected these pins. I had questions about the pins, but Mike refused to answer. I told everybody here that from those pins, it's 15 steps to my front door. I asked Mike why he didn't come alert me to his, my neighbor's intentions as well as his rulings. Perhaps not going to, hey, let me show you something, Mr. Stevens. These are the pins. I'm going to let him do this. I'm going to let him do that. 15 steps away, I don't know why he wouldn't do it. Just last week, my neighbor on the other side applied for a permit to get her fence. A couple days later, Mr. Italia goes and talks to that neighbor and says, I have consulted with Mr. Goods, that's the neighbor who destroyed my property, he consulted with Mr. Goods, and Mr. Goods says he will permit her to put her fence in. He consulted with the guy who destroyed my fence to make sure he was okay with my other neighbor's fence, but he wouldn't walk 15 steps to my front yard, to my front door and explain it to me. Where was my consultation? And I get blank stares. I get crickets. How can you not be angry with that when he shows such bias toward this man? I got a lot more to say. I have, at five minutes, three or five minutes apart, I've gotten months of this, and I'm not going away, Mike. And you'd have the right to remain silent at township meeting. What a worm.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else tonight for public comment?
Is it possible to show a clock so that some people, when they're talking, can see how much time they have left?
Anything's possible, Frank. Anything.
I'm just making it easier. That's more of a morning. No, just make sure your cell phone, put a timer on it.
Rocco Flaherty, 219 Brownsville Road, in Langiron. Been coming to these meetings for close to seven years now, putting everybody on notice for the board. I no longer feel safe coming to these meetings. Everybody has a right to public opinion, public comment. I'm not going to stop coming to these meetings. I feel no longer safe coming to these meetings. Thank you.
President Stevens?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Flaherty. We appreciate that. Anybody else tonight for public comment? Seeing none. Going once, going twice. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda for tonight. Line item one, A, approval of minutes, January 24th, 2024. B, approval of accounts payable, February 14th, 2024. C, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, February 14th, 2024. Do we have a motion on line item one?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotta. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Line item two, Consider Decision of Conditional Use Hearing for Federation Housing, Inc., 1834 Brownsville Road for the Proposed Apartment Building. Mr. Dillon, sir?
Yes, we're here tonight to render a decision. The record on this matter has been closed. The MPC requires a timely decision. For that reason, I prepared a decision approving the conditional use with conditions and a decision denying the application. What is needed at this point is a motion to approve or deny the application and to adopt and approve the decision as written by the solicitor, either approving or denying the application. Whatever decision is made will be signed, and I'll email it to the applicant's attorney, Mr. Murphy, tomorrow.
All right, very good then. Thank you, Mr. Dillon, for that. So we have two options in front of us, one to approve, one to deny. One of my colleagues on the board would like to make a motion for one of the two. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. My motion would be to deny the conditional use application for Federation Housing, 1834 Brownsville Road in Trevo's.
And we also amend that to include to adopt and approve the decision as written by the solicitor, denying the application, dated, February 14th, 2024.
I will amend that. Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Thank you, Mr. Castle. So we have a motion. Do we have a second for that? I'll second that motion. Do we have any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also an aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Line item number three, Preliminary Final Land Development for BT Feasterville LP 105 East Street Road for Proposed Commercial Bank Building with a Drive-Thru Facility. Mr.--
Mr. Chairman, yes, if I can interject here. I have a business relationship with Bruce Toll as a contractor, so therefore I'm going to abstain from the discussion and the vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castle, for that. Mr. Dillon, sir?
Yes, please identify yourself for the board.
Sure. Good evening. My name's Karen Ace House. I'm an attorney with a law firm of Fox Trotters. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant.
So do you have a board or something that just briefly show the--
We do.
So you briefly explain what, a short explanation of what you're planning to do?
Of course. So also here with me this evening is Peter Crowley, representative of the applicant, George Hartman. He's the civil engineer on the project, as well as John Witschner, our traffic consultant. This property is located at 105 East Street Road. It's an existing shopping center, Zone C2 commercial. The applicant is proposing to redevelop the center by constructing a bank pad. It's a freestanding building up along the front of Vice Street Road, which would be approximately 3,465 square feet, shown here depicted on the plan. We can certainly go in more detail if you'd like us to explain the improvements that are being proposed. Mr. Hartman can run through those. We did receive zoning relief from the zoning hearing board last year in connection with the proposed redevelopment. We then submitted preliminary final land development plans, which are here, which are presented before you this evening. We met with the Planning Commission last fall. They did give a recommendation for preliminary final land development approval, and we're here before you this evening requesting your consideration to grant that preliminary final land development approval, as well as certain waivers that we're also requesting in connection with the plans.
The board members, do the board members have any questions? Anybody from the public have any questions?
Mr. Gates?
How are we going to get access to this bank? Where would you come in?
Mr. Gates, would you mind coming to the podium, please?
Yeah.
Go to that, George.
Yeah.
This is the main signalized access that exists today.
Right.
So that remains. There's no, there's no change to the access.
Is this on the Acme side or the other side, on the street road?
Acme side. This is the overall one. So here's your existing signalized access. That access is not changing.
Right. And where is the building going to be?
It's right there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. I, we've discussed the resolution. I prepared a resolution memorializing what was requested by the engineers and the professionals. Have you had a chance to review that?
We did. We've reviewed the resolution, and the applicant is amenable to the conditions that are set forth in the resolution.
Okay. So my suggestion to the board, then, the appropriate motion is either to adopt Resolution 2024-8 or to deny the application.
All right, so I'll take it over from here. So the motion, as Mr. Dillon would said, will start off with to adopt, adopt Resolution 2024-8 regarding 105 East Street Road, BT Feasterville LP, for the construction of a proposed bank, granting preliminary and final land development approval on a portion of the tax map parcels 21-00, excuse me, 21-011-008/001002 and 21/011/003/001. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perrotta. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second that.
We'll give it to the young lady, Mrs. Cummings. Thank you, Mrs. Cummings. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Mrs. Cummings, I just wanted to make sure I heard an aye.
Aye, from Mrs. Cummings.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Motion carries five--
Abstention.
Excuse me. I apologize. As Mr. Castle had stated earlier, he's going to abstain for tonight, so that is four ayes, one abstent, one abstention motion does carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank.
All right. Line item number four, Consider Approval of Payment Number Two to Pasarini and Sons, Inc., for the Pike Road Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. Mrs. Fountain?
Thank you, Lester.
I mean, we are recommending payment number two, as you said, in the amount of $13,075.80 for the Pike Road Sanitary Sewer Replacement, and that payment should be made to Pasarini and Sons Incorporated. I'll note that there is basically only one remaining item of work, and that is the permanent pavement restoration.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Fountain. We appreciate that. So the motion would read to approve payment number two to Pasarini and Sons, Inc., for the Pike Road Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project in the amount of $13,075.80, and authorize the township manager to sign the documents. Do we have a motion? I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Ottinger. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Line item number five, Consider Adoption of Resolution 2024-9, the amended fee schedule. Mr. Italia, sir?
Yeah, so before you is the updated for 2024. There's modification for road opening permits. There was a modification for the food trucks and transient permits, and there was just some small, minor other adjustments that, you know, that get adjusted with current rates and whatnot. So pretty straightforward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Italia, for that. So the motion would read to adopt Resolution 2024-9, amended fee schedule for 2024. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Cummings. Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Perrotta. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Line item number six, Consideration of Proposals for Evaluation of the Lower Southampton Township Police Department Operations and Procedures. Mr. Gaudo, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. Just a little bit of history on this. As far as typically in a township or in a borough, so to speak, there's a range for a police department budget that fits into the general fund budget. Typically, the range is anywhere from 55% or 50% to about 70, 75%. Currently, the police budget in the 2024 budget, general fund budget component, is a range around 64% off the top of my head. As far as budget implications, any type of operations or operational procedures, as well as policy and policy procedurals, procedures have a budget implication. So I was charged, basically, to get professional service proposals with regard to the, I guess, more the assessment or evaluation of certain issues with the police department. Before you were two proposals. One is, I believe, Mr. Schmuel at a particular price point, and the other, I believe, was MCS Consulting at a separate price point also. Both would be professional service-type contracts. Potentially, you could talk about policy review, staffing levels, crime and clearance rates, and cost analysis per officer. So they're the typical, for instances, that could be covered in there.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Gaudo. So as of right now, we have two different consulting groups, as Mr. Gaudo had stated, for tonight. The first one is MCS Consulting and Implementations, and the second is WR Schmuel PMC, Police Management Consultant. Would one of the board members like to put a motion on the floor for one of the two?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we hire W. Ron Schmuel, Police Management Consultant of State College, PA, at a cost of $29,500 plus fees for his professional review of our policies, practices, contracts, personnel, and his recommendations.
All right. We have a motion on the floor for that. Do we have a second?
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed $29,500. There we go. All right.
Plus expenses, I thought. Or is that included?
Yes, pluses.
Expenses.
Correct. All right. Very good then. We have a motion made by Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Perrotta. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Ottinger, I wasn't sure if I heard an aye or--
You heard a no.
No, okay. Very good. So we have four ayes, one no at this point. The motion passes. Four ayes, one no. Thank you very much. Line item number seven, Personnel. Mr. Gaudo, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. During the executive session, there was discussion on various titles of individual personnel. Before you would be for a recommendation for approval for 3% for the HR function, 3% for the executive assistant function to the township manager, 3% to the finance director, 3.5% for the recreation director, 4% for the public works director, 4% for the two lieutenants in the police, in the police department, 4% for the chief, and as well as 4% for the township manager.
All right. Very good. Mr. Gaudo, I know typically every year, right around this time of year, we go through the same process. So do we have a motion as stated by our township manager this evening?
In all, sorry, Board Chair. All increases are already incorporated into your 2024 budget.
Correct. Correct. Thank you. Once again, do we have a motion as stated by our township manager, Mr. Joe Gaudo? manager, Mr. Joe Gaudo?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Mrs. Cummings. Thank you. Do we have a second? A second. Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Mr. Gaudo, manager's report, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. As far as the manager's report, again, Township Cleanup Day is Saturday, April 20th, starting at 9:00 a.m. Walt would be looking for any type of volunteers. I believe it's listed on his recreation website or page. Also, Lower South Fire Department is selling lottery raffle tickets for the month of March. Again, the tickets allow for 31 chances to win. The tickets are only $10. The daily prize is $50, and on March 17th and March 31st, it's a $200 prize. So if you could assist the Lower South Fire Department, please purchase a raffle ticket. Sanitation rebates, again, that start at February 8th through May 31st. We've already issued about 114 rebates so far. That's about $5,700 of a $61,000 budget so far. Again, Lower South residents, you have to be, you have to be a Lower South resident. Senior citizen, 65 or older. A veteran, more than exceeding 50%, disabled or at 50%. Must be a homeowner for the entire year of 2023. Again, primary residents. Must be 65 as of 12/31/23, and your tax bill has to be paid in full by 12/31/23 to be eligible. That's all I have, Board Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gaudo. Moving on to supervisor's comments. I generally start to my left, so Mr. Ottinger, sir?
Nothing tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Mrs. Cummings, would you like to chime in for supervisor's comments?
Absolutely. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for all those who took out time of the visiting schedule to come and attend the board meeting. I'd like to inform the board, Mr. Gaudo, that effective this evening, February 14th, 2024, I will resign from my position on the Lower South Hampton Board of Supervisors. I am selling my home that I resided in for the last 40 years with my husband Perry and my two children that I raised there. Thank you for allowing me to serve as a supervisor for the last four years and appreciate the residents giving me this great opportunity. I would like to thank Mr. Gaudo, all the department heads, along with John, Mike, the chief, and all the volunteers in the community on our subsidiary boards, and all the employees who have dedicated to keeping Lower South Hampton a great place to live. I'd like to thank the police and fire departments and EMS for the hard work they do every day to keep our residents safe. It's been an honor to serve alongside my colleagues on the board and with the solicitor, Mr. Dillon. I take pride, great pride, in all the accomplishments this board has done for the residents of the community. I wish all the best in the coming years to my fellow board members, and again, thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Mrs. Cummings, if I could just chime in real quick. This board, we will miss you, Mrs. Cummings. I've known you a very long time, you and your entire family. Mrs. Cummings has always been a class act person. She's been terrific, and we will miss you. The board will miss you. The entire township will miss you, and thank you very much for everything you have done for us. Thank you again.
I truly miss everyone.
Mr. Perrotta, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day. I just want to comment on Mrs. Cummings leaving. I got to know Sue some 20 years ago on the school board and-
Does age mean how old you are?
Yeah, I'm not. I'm not. You're still, you're still 28 to me. And she's always been a concerned person that was cared about the residents and making sure that the government served the people, not the other way around. She was always straightforward and honest. I learned a lot from her when I came to the school board. She was there. I think we served together for four or five years before we left the school board. It was just a pleasant experience, and I will miss you immensely and hope you visit often. So thank you very much, and the same to say, give Perry my thoughts and wishes, too, and I hope you enjoy yourself down there. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perrotta. Mr. Castle, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Miss Cummings, you will be missed. I've sat alongside of you for over two years now, and I always appreciated your insight, which was, you had your own unique way of looking at things, and it has opened my eyes to, you know, looking at the same topic but from a different point of view. So I do appreciate you, and I will miss you, sitting next to you. I'd like to thank the audience for coming out tonight. It's always wonderful to have a great crowd. Usually, it's not this crowded. So thank you for coming out. You are the ones that hold your elected officials accountable, and when you are here, that is what makes government work. So I thank you for coming out. Mr. Filato, something will be done because none of our members of the public should feel threatened for coming to a public meeting. So this will be looked at swiftly and-
It's more of a concern for everybody, not the personal-
Yes. Well, I, I can handle myself.
Yeah.
All right? I'm okay, but you should not have to feel that way. So we will do something about that. Please, support our Parks and Recreation. They have wonderful programs, and one way that you could find out about our programs is by being on the township email list. So lowersouthamptontownship.org. Please sign up. You get one email a week. You will get emergency alerts. We've been through two or three snowstorms so far, and you get alerts about we're moving your cars from the roads. So it's very important to be tuned in to what your government is doing. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank my wife, who is allowing me to be here tonight. I've been married 42 years, I believe. That number changes every year, so I could be off. But thank you, dear. I'll be home shortly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Castle. Mr. Gaudo, sir, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but with Mrs. Cummings' announcement, I guess the township has to advertise the vacancy?
That's what we've done in the past, yes, sir.
All right. And I believe, most recent memory was, I believe, we put it up for about two weeks.
That's correct.
So if the board's okay with that, I would like, you know, Mr. Gaudo to, unfortunately, we have to advertise this position due to Mrs. Cummings, but I think we need to put that up? Yes. Mr. Chrysanthus, one moment, please. Mr. Ottinger has a question.
I got to put on the record, congratulations on your retirement, Sue. I think it was 15 years ago, we met on the school board. So congrats, and thanks for your friendship, and thanks for always meaning, guiding things in the right direction.
Your solicitor's going to miss you, too.
I'll miss you, Frank.
All right. Mr. Chrysanthus, go ahead.
Just a question of process. So when she resigns, that means her position will be up this November to vote?
No, this isn't a municipal, I don't think.
Yeah, I'd rather Mr. Dillon answer that. I'm not one with the law.
This isn't a municipal election year.
So the replacement will take out the rest of her term and then the next?
I'm not sure what her term is. We're going to accept the resignation at the next meeting. I'll give you the answer then, and then they're going to advertise and appoint someone else, so.
All right. Well, good luck, Sue, in your future endeavors. It was a pleasure seeing you here.
Joyful Florida.
Joyful Florida.
Land of the free.
All righty.
Land of the gritty kids. That's a good thing.
And I'll just continue with my closing comments. I just want to wish everybody a happy and blessed Lent season. Happy Valentine's Day to my wife, and I also want to wish my wife a very happy birthday, her 32nd. Wink, wink, honey. Her birthday is tomorrow.
More sincere than that.
So I'm sure, I'm sure Kimberly is not watching the meeting tonight, but if anybody sees her out shopping, please tell her I wish her a happy birthday. And with that said, can I get a motion for adjournment, please? Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
I'll adjourn.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate you coming out. Thank you.